May we live our lives to the fullest with your hand to guide us and your knowledge to protect the work that needs to be done. We pray in your name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It looks to me like we're all here, but Madam Court would you call over and make sure?
Kramer?
Here.
Farmer?
Here.
Gilbert?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Krieger?
Here.
Pinkston?
Here.
Root?
Here.
And we are all here, very good, including our newest member, Father Andy.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to the approval of the minutes, and we're going to call out our newest member to read the motion to approve the minutes of our March 2015.
I move the Swartz Creek City Council approved the minutes of the regular council meeting held Monday, March 25th, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to the minutes? No one is suggesting any. Madam Court, would you call you all against motion?
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Uh, yes.
And motion passes. Next on our business is the agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Zalvo, are there any additions to the agenda or changes?
I don't have any additions or changes.
Anything from council? Now, suggestions. All right, Mr. Krieger, would you read the motion to accept the agenda, please?
Uh, I move the Swartz Creek City Council approve the agenda as printed for their regular council meeting of April 8th, 2019, to be circulated and placed on file.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the minutes as printed. Speaking of motion? Oh, Madam Court, please call motion.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
That motion passes. Um, I'm going to go back one item to the minutes, um, if I may. On page 22 of those minutes, uh, the first two lines on the page indicate that Mr. Gilbert voted both yes and no on the motion, and I doubt that he actually did that. So, uh, we ask that the minutes be changed to the age of each. He only voted one way, and Gilbert, do you remember which way you voted on that?
No.
He voted no. Moving on to reports and communications. Mr. Zalvo, anything to add to your report?
I added one communication that I distributed in hard copy this evening, an email from Andy Harris, OHM Advisors Engineer, relating to the Helmsley Drive negotiated bid. And then I'd like to call attention to the, some new business items, including the Census Committee and non-commercial medical marijuana regulations. I know the mayor will be looking for someone to help add the Census Committee, and so folks can, uh, put some thought into those communications in their report and have communications with the mayor here at this venue or offline to see if that's a position you can look to make an appointment for the next meeting. And then I have been in communication with city attorney about regulations for non-commercial marijuana home grows. So, the city has opted out of the five license types for recreational marijuana, um, and growing facilities. So, growing, processing, transportation, testing, and provisioning are allowed, but Michigan residents still have a right to grow as caregivers or, I think, to 12 plants for recreational use. And so, there's some discussions going on in the state about appropriate time, place, manner, building code, and other regulations that are reasonable to make sure quality of life in neighborhoods isn't deteriorating or negatively adversely impacted. Uh, currently we don't have anything on books but for nuisance law and the standard building and trade regulations that you observe throughout the state. Uh, but there are, we are getting a few more complaints, primarily about odor, and, uh, it's a difficult complaint to address at this point in time. So, there might be some more objectivity we can add to expectations homeowners and residents have, occupants, as well as enforcement means that we can reasonably to use. So, that's a section in our board that's not for discussion, but folks had questions or comments, feel free to bring them up.
Thank you. As, uh, was noted at a last meeting and is noted in our package again today, for each person that we may count on the census, it probably cost us $1,000 in state and federal funds. So, we are very much interested in getting an accurate count of the census. Um, we have adjusted with the, I believe, state government where our city boundaries were because they had inaccurate boundaries for the city, leaving some of our people out of what we've been counting otherwise, uh, that should be credited to us, and that's a neighboring township. So, we are going to rely to do all of that. Um, also, I pointed out to the people who talked to us about the census that I thought that the day in which they're doing the count was not the best day of the year. April 1st may not be the best time to ask people how many are actually living in your house. Uh, they did tell me we can't count our dogs and cats, unfortunately. But if you have over a thousand people living in your house on that day, and that really helps our city, not I'm suggesting anything, but... All right, then, um, would you please read the motion to accept the city manager's report?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
I move the Swartz Creek City Council accept the city manager's report of April 8th, 2019, including reports and communications to be circulated and placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any speaking to anything in the city manager's report? Questions or comments?
I have.
If it's on something other than in the report, that particular report, we'll bring it up next.
Okay, um, just a, just a quick question. Um, on Brown Road? Where, where's Brown Road? The Brown Road site, which is where?
Brown Road is in Chia Austin County. It's, uh, I believe it's Hill Road in Genesee
County. Yeah, and that is a good old, it comes out right between Fleeter Lake and Holiday Shores and Good Old Road.
City has partial there that used to be the, um, water pump station for Winchester Village subdivision. You know, it's a private development, it means township. Well, that's still there. Uh, they've been capped appropriately, but property is something, uh, we should probably look into selling and insuring its environmental integrity. There's no reason to suspect there isn't, there's issues there based on its private usage, but, um, at this point, we haven't had a use for it probably 45 years.
Yeah, there's probably no good reason for Swartz Creek. They own the land in a neighboring county.
Water rates keep going up, we can start pumping Holiday Shores later.
There you go.
Do you have one county?
And just one thing I'd like to add, um, on my list here. I did invite Demi up to the township. She's a treasure out there, to attend our next DVA meeting because at their request, from attending our, um, Genesee County Small Cities and Villages meeting last week, they were looking to try to start a DVA out there. And I invited her to come to the next DVA meeting in April, oh, up here in Seale. In the township?
Let them know what a DVA does.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I just, you know, talk to the people.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And is that pumping station still functional?
No.
Up there?
No.
Is it roof anything, the way it is?
Yeah, I don't believe the water rights are still intact. It's something we've had conversations often with Genesee County Transmission Waterway Service Division, because we still have a functional 16-inch water main, concrete composition from city limits on the west end all the way to that facility. And, uh, it's been brought up due to potential need for finished or raw water for the project 10, or as a potential service to the west end of the county and the potential that the county could benefit from in future years. And so, the pipe has more potential use, public purpose, than the water rights or the facility that's there. There's just a center block building. I think we should get in there and demo in the next 12 months.
Are, are we the ones that are mowing the lawn out there? Somebody goes out there and does that?
We do clear vision cutting, but that's all that's required. It's, it's a rural site and forested at this point.
Anything else?
Do you have my ignorance here if that's... Can the water flow both ways in the main?
Yeah. Yeah, main, uh, main under pressure can have flow engineered. It goes where it's used. So, the county's working on a water master plan. There's areas in the county that like to service water that don't have it. Uh, M-13 and I-69, Swartz Creek Estates in Clayton Township has been a, a need for Clayton over the years. Right now, we've, we've been discussing for a couple of years how we have a branching system on the west end. We need to go to a grid system for redundancy. So, right now, we have a big transmission line that flows into the city to Miller Road, and it's primarily Beth and Die in Elms. Uh, and then it just branches off into Oakwood and all these other places, but it doesn't have a secondary feed from the south at Hill or from the north, anywhere. First of all, left, we've drawn out. And the idea is to be able to have area of elevation feeding that. So, if there was another issue on Miller, like when we had to do the disconnection at Winston Drive to repair and replace a section underneath the road, we would lose pressure, and we can maintain better fire flows. And so, part of it is total, um, capacity of the system, and a lot of it is engineered redundancy and fire flow. And that's a, a regional issue. It's not something we can address in the city. We can't have ourselves looped in two miles to the west, you know, to an area to the north. We're relying on Genesee County's plan to make some of those accommodations due to growth that's occurred over the decades west of the community. And so, that, that could be one of the purposes of that water main, um, which is not in service at this time, and is physically disconnected from our system. But last I was told, Tom Struchek has more information, it was pressure tested and functional.
How do you establish a price on it if you sell it?
Probably depreciated since cost new, so cost new with depreciation. So, whatever that means, cost today depreciated over the years that it's been in service and however many years it might have left on its expected life. But... Well, that line was, must have been installed in the mid-'50s.
Yeah, the surface Winchester Village, when they built Winchester Village, so 56.
Oh, okay.
But the beauty of that line is, because it is concrete, it doesn't have services on it, it could be relined, um, with a composite type material. The way we reline sewers, we put in a canvas or similar material inside would be epoxy and monopolize much pipe capacity at all. Uh, could probably add another 100-year life to it. The difficulty with relining water mains is making the cuts post-mining for services and then attempting to negotiate valves and pipelines. Uh, that transmission line doesn't have all those issues that can influence the city. So, there's, there's the property, which I don't think we have a bona fide public interest in maintaining and owning in perpetuity. And then there's the line which has greater regional value if the right plan is put in place. But right now, it's, the impact on us is negligible in terms of its values and asset reliability and its operational costs.
Any other questions? I believe we're ready to vote on this.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
That motion passes. Questions on anything else in the reports, communications, on any subject that will not be coming up for business night? No one seems to be asking for the floor, so we will open the meeting to the public. Uh, if there's anything that you'd like to address the council about, uh, please approach the podium, tell us your name and where you live and what's on your head. How you doing?
My name's Gary Borg. I live in 53 Gammishane Drive, Swartz Creek. A reason I stepped in, and I'd like to face a concern, I went to the, uh, I got a daughter that goes to middle school. I've lived in the village for 10 years. Uh, my reason for being here is just to comment, to see if city council wants to try to see what they can do. It's a trust to pedestrian safety. These children, especially before daylight savings time, are walking through an alley, basically with no light. The back entrance to the high school, since they put in a circle in the front, they're forced to go out the back. And now that they have the art center at nighttime, besides daylight safety, it's complete darkness for people walking their dogs or whatever. There is no street light there. It's, it's just not cool. I've seen many people slamming on brakes on the set of children in the morning. I go down that road three or four times a day. There really's no excuse for it. I believe that that light should have been up years ago, especially with the art center now, which is ridiculous. I believe this is why children are getting hit, these street signs and speed limits. I don't think that's the fix. They need to see what they're driving into. These kids are no match for these vehicles. They're in a hurry to get their kids to school. Um, I don't believe it's right for any of you who have children, if you want to sit and watch, go there somewhere and you'll see what I mean. The traffic is ridiculous. Before daylight savings time is a real factor. Not just the fact that three in the late coming out of the high school, and the back arc amount there to Cappy Lane, they go up to the stop sign at Cappy Lane in Fairchild. That street light has been up for months. When the light bulb did work, the lens is completely dirty, getting breakouts sufficiently. Those are my main two topics. But also, since my child does go to the middle school, I do believe that the dirt road that comes out of the middle school off the back entrance is to be addressed. The, uh, dirt, it's over the sidewalk. There's no light there either. All the way up from the corner Childby's, Cappy Lane, to the back of that school, all the way across that dirt road, there is no stop sign. They don't close the gate. These kids don't have a chance, especially before daylight savings time. Now that it's late, it's not so bad, but still a fact, there's no slow down, there's no stop. There's nothing. You can't even see a child if you're there before daylight savings time going in the back of that middle school. It's dark all the way up to that back door to get in that school. There isn't even one light. So, I believe lighting would be an issue to keep children from getting in it. That's my whole purpose, bringing any care attention to you. Thank you for your time.
And Mike, sir, can you identify yourself again?
My name's Gary Borg. I live in the village.
Okay, and that light was on Fairchild, right?
Fairchild and Cappy Lane.
Okay.
Right at the intersection where the busters go.
Right.
There's this only two-way stop sign there, and if you're there even when the kids are getting out of school, the buses themselves don't even stop at the stop signs.
Just to bring to your attention, uh, that we are working on a safe routes to schools program here in this community, and who can address some of those issues?
I just don't want to see another child get hit. And I've seen, and I, I figured, you know, A and S enough. This should have been done years ago. I've never seen a school with no lighting in an entrance. It's on California, and I think it's something that could be fixed. I have gone to the city superintendent. I've heard many people say it's been trying to get taken care of, but I've never had a return call. And I've never been to a council meeting before. But I don't want to see another kid after the hospital go to somewhere, refuse to put up a light. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir.
No one else? All right, then we will close the public hearing and move on to the council business for this evening. Yeah, the first item is permit for the color run street permit. Is this, are you going to read that? Um, would you read it as amended for it to be notes at different time that's going to be?
Oh, that's right. So, it's going to be at 6:00 PM, is that right?
Yep, 6:00 PM instead of in the morning.
Did it go, did it end at 8? Is, did they have a delay?
I believe it should be ended before that. Two hours should be more than the time.
Okay. Whereas the Swartz Creek Community Schools is a recognized nonprofit entity that operates in Swartz Creek, and whereas the Swartz Creek High School Student Council proposes a 5K color run road race that will be centered in Winchester Village on Saturday, May 11th, 2019, beginning at 6:00 and ending at 8:00 PM. Whereas the city council finds this organization at the event to be beneficial to the public and in good standing, and whereas the Metro Police Department of Genesee County has reviewed and administratively approved street usage for this event, now therefore be it resolved, yet the city of Swartz Creek hereby approves the application for a street usage permit for a 5-kilometer food ro- food, yeah, foot road race. It's edited May 11th, 2019, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Advocate the Swartz Creek High School Student Council is represented by the Swartz Creek Community School District in the care of Principal Kitchen, race to be held in Winchester Village subdivision in accordance with the application submitted under the direction and control of the Chief of Police and contingent upon the provision of valid insurance listing the city of Swartz Creek as an additionally insured party.
Second.
Hey, uh, you thought that was a race for residents of Principal Kitchen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What, what, uh, so, uh, being a color runner, is there going to be paint everywhere?
Yeah, that's my question. What is the color?
It's a powder.
What's a color?
They throw colors at the kids.
Yeah.
And they're really, it's like a powder.
It's a powder, yeah, it's a powder.
It'll wash out after a rainfall?
Yeah.
Very cool. There's been a number of these in the community over the years, a lot of them. They typically are isolated out on school grounds. Like, though, people run laps in elementary school, for example. Uh, so, there's not a lasting disturbance, it's notable.
Yes, sir.
Isn't that the same weekend as Winchester subdivision garage sale?
It absolutely is.
That's going to be a mess.
We were encouraging them to pick a different weekend altogether, a different route. Hence why the original time is noted as 9:00 AM to 11:00 on that Saturday. The reality is those sales probably begin Thursday or Friday, and then en masse Saturday and Sunday.
But it's a, and you, I mean, they got cars parked on both sides of the road. You can't hardly get down through there, maybe with a bicycle. I don't know how they're going to have a, a road race through there with all those cars trying to get in and out of there and...
Well, the sales, the sales supposed to run from 9:00 to 3:00.
It's pretty well, it'll be.
I think it'll be pretty well ratted up by 6:00 PM. Uh, but that is part of the issue. Again, we recommended a, a second alternative weekend altogether, but of course, they had a right to ask council. At this point, Chief Bates content that it would be functional and safe, but council absolutely can deny it. That's why they're asking, because, uh, again, the stated time for the garage sales, 9:00 to 3:00, but they'll be selling Thursday through Sunday.
Yeah.
And sum them up. And Saturday and Sunday will be as busy as.
They don't lock up in that village until it's dark, so...
I don't know. I feel like the last few years I've driven through there for them, I'm rather disappointed.
Well, the last couple of years has been bad weather. If you get a nice day and 70 degrees, it's going to be a nightmare.
Is there a reason they didn't like the other weekend that was proposed?
I wasn't provided with a reason.
Should the council turn down the request? They would have to come back with a request for a different weekend. If they want to continue to have that event. So, it's up to us to tell them if you can do it or not, just maybe.
Do you know where they're going to be poofing the colors out?
I don't know where the color applications stations are.
My only concern, if it's in the village somewhere that they're going to be doing that, then it's going to be poofy in the air, people have stuff sitting out, but I don't know how that works. Is it only at the beginning that they run through and get all the color?
I don't know.
I wouldn't, I don't know either, but I would think they would do it throughout the race. Otherwise, it's kind of not as fun. You know, like, if it just all happens right in the beginning, then you've been a more dragged to the race. But I don't know that. Anybody know?
They could do it either way, but it does, they are quite messy. It's, I mean, that's the fun of it.
Right.
But there is, so it's a powder. Think of similar to a chalk powder, it's not chalk. And they're super bright colors, and they come in big boxes, you know, in 25-pound boxes. And they just grab handfuls of it and throw it, and it's really bright. It's a great time, and it's fun, but it does leave some traces behind.
And if there's shoppers out with wild cars on the streets, their cars are going to get hit. I mean, not that there couldn't be cars there anyway, just on a regular day, but, um, if it's nice weather, the garage sales are busy. If it's raining, they're, they'll be done in a hurry of time, but it just depends on the weather.
Sidewalk traffic.
All right, interesting situation for us to consider before we vote. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Recommendable for all councilmen and ladies? Nope, all right. Madam Court, we're ready to vote.
Krieger?
No.
Pinkston?
No.
Root?
No.
Kramer?
No.
Farmer?
No.
Gilbert?
No.
Hicks?
No.
I would love to see another weekend.
Yeah, I mean, if it's stated that we just like a different weekend, not that we're just...
Yeah, absolutely. I'll pass that along to them. Uh, this was the big concern when it became apparent that that was going to be the garage sale weekend.
If they take a later weekend, they might be able to advertise during the garage sales that there's a color run coming up, and there's going to be a lot of people on that route, you know, I don't know.
And I don't know, like, in the universe, this is coming from, seniors in high school, they made an out, a run in May. And then there was the Riverbend Strivers doing a race Thursday, hometown days in the village, 5K. And so, they may have, I mean, their options may be limited. This part of the problem is they didn't pick a good weekend, and there's not too many weekends to pick at this point, given the timing that they have for them.
Could you suggest that just do a different route, so they're not?
Yes, there's a lot of different options. Again, a lot of these races are entirely isolated on school or other private grounds, and don't even need permission. Elementary schools do these routines. I had one of my son that said, uh, Elm Grove a couple of years ago, so, elementary. So, they, they have options.
Okay.
But this is what they opted to apply for.
Would it be, would we have to shut down the road if they went up Crayville to Marish? Down Ingalls?
That's, that's a police decision. That's, that's a police decision.
Well, I'm going to officially declare that the motion failed, since we all already know. Next item of business is the planning commission appointment. Mr. Gilbert, would you care to read that, please?
Sure. Whereas laws of the state of Michigan, the chartering ordinances of the city of Schwartz Creek, interlocal agreements in which the city of Schwartz Creek is a member, and provisions previous resolutions of the city council require and set terms of office for various appointments to city boards and commissions, as well as appointments to non-city boards and commissions seeking representation by city officials, and whereas there exists a vacancy in the planning commission, and whereas said appointments are ma- may or low appointments, subject to affirmation of the city council. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek City Council concur with the mayor and city council appointment as follows. Mayor, mayor appointment, Nathan Henry, planning commission resident, remainder of three-year term expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. Mr. Henry's here. Would you raise your hand, please? All right, so we know who he is. Speaking of the motion? Nope, we're ready to vote on that.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes. Motion passes. Welcome to our public service, sir. And the next item of business is the C D B G renewal. And C D B G stands for what, Mr. Zell?
Community Development Block Grants Program.
All right. Pinkston, would you read the motion, please?
Whereas the city of Schwartz Creek currently participates in Genesee County Community Development Block Grant Program, and whereas the city maintains entitlement status by virtue of the cooperative agreement established in nineteen ninety-four, enabling the city to receive G B C T B G funds from the county, and whereas the continuation clause of the agreement indicates that entitlement status must be affirmed every three years to maintain fundability, and whereas after consult consultation with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, the city council finds that the benefits that the cooperative agreement offer outweigh the benefits of opting out. Therefore, be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek City Council hereby affirms and states its intent to remain in the Genesee County C D B G program through twenty twenty-two, and directs the city perp to sign and deliver a letter from Genesee County, Patrick Powell, and planning commission indicating this intent.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. Anybody speaking to this motion? Something we do like every year.
For three years.
Every three years.
I think they're asking that for two years, for some reason, it's kind of... Are there any questions about the report, M E D C benefits, community revitalization program funds versus C D B G? I tried to outline the research I did as best as possible, indicating benefits of staying in versus opting out.
Right.
So.
No questions. This meeting is moving right along without, uh, Councilmember Foreth here.
That is the second comment. Second time.
Man, quick, let's call the roll.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
The motion passes. Uh, our next, uh, motion is A D, a resolution to approve the park waiver request of the Boy Scouts PAC one twenty-two. Mr. Root, would you read that, please?
Whereas the city of Schwartz Creek requires park usage reservations and fees in accordance with adopted rules and regulations, and whereas the Boy Scouts PAC one twenty-two reserved Pavilion Number Two in Elm Park for May eighteenth, twenty nineteen, for the purpose of holding an organizational meeting, and thus, the city park rules and regulations state that fees may be waived in full if reservations by a nonprofit are found to result in public benefit directly, or proceeds from the reserved event are found to be a benefit to the city, and whereas the city council finds the petitioning group to be a qualifying group with a qualifying activity. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Schwartz Creek City Council hereby waives all fees for the May eighteenth, twenty nineteen reservation in Elm Park.
Second.
Motion is being seconded. Anyone wish to speak to that motion? No one wishes to speak, so we call the motion.
Kramer?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
The motion also passes. We might look to our last piece of business this evening. It's a resolution to approve final contractor services and pricing for Helmsley Drive reconstruction. And, uh, Mr. Farmer, would you read that, please? Where's your turn?
It's my turn. It's my turn.
Please, Bob, it's your turn. Okay, Mr. Kramer.
Okay, all right. Uh, whereas the city of Schwartz Creek owns, operates, and maintains a system of major streets, local streets, water main, and whereas the city has a twenty year asset management plan on file, I know, that is funded, imparted, a twenty year levy, and whereas Helmsley Drive was approved for reconstruction by the city council on July ninth, twenty nineteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Correction, twenty eighteen, with the understanding that the contract with the general contractor, thirty dollars, may be extended, and final prices would be negotiated and subsequently approved by the city council, and whereas the city engineer staff and general contractor have assessed their current market for such services, and negotiated, uh, escalators to the twenty seventeen contract accordingly. Now therefore, be it resolved, the city council hereby extends the contract for place or dollars for street reconstruction through the twenty nineteen construction season, with allowances for escalators as included in the city council packet of April eighth, twenty nineteen. Be it further resolved that the city council authorizes the city manager to execute changes, execute change orders required to effect this change on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Anybody speaking to this motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, just a question. Um, I wasn't quite clear to me, Adam, uh, the increase of thirteen point three percent over the twenty seventeen prices, projected to the construction of Helmsley, wasn't clear to me. Fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and three cents. That wasn't clear. Why, or what, and?
So the biggest change are hot mix asphalt, which is called H M A, under road reconstruction pricing chart. So you're looking at line items twenty-six and twenty-seven paging. We knew this a year ago, that when they were putting pencil to paper in late two thousand sixteen, early two thousand seventeen, for the Rochester, Chester, Winston project, they had tremendous economies of scale in what would have been two thousand seventeen summer pricing. They held those unit costs through the construction of DeValle Drive last year. Coming in as DeValle Drive was being finalized, they indicated they could look to hold most of their unit prices, but they knew for certain that, given Helmsley's smaller scope and time passing for another two years, and increased competition for road, uh, projects, that the H M A or hot mix asphalt, I mean, in concrete, unit costs were gonna go up. And so when we looked to extend the contract last July to go forward into the summer, there was an understanding that they had to bring back final pricing as we got closer to spring, with what that's gonna be, and then council can take it or leave it, or can do something different. Uh, frankly, their first draft of this pricing schedule for two thousand nineteen was substantially higher, and we entered into negotiations. And with the engineer being available, looking at what bids were coming in currently for similarly situated projects, and the understanding that there is a cost of living increase for some of the other line items, uh, or the loss of economies of scale for some things, they felt this price was very reasonable to be able to work off of the old bids. I'm certain we'll wanna rebid, not rebid, bid future projects. You can only work with an existing contractor so long before the public has certainty or a strong sense of confidence that we are back getting competitive pricing for something like this. Certainly, we were last year because they literally held over every line item cost from the year before. They're going up now to the, uh, to about thirteen percent as indicated. About thirteen percent over two thousand seventeen pricing is not very reasonable, because the landscape has changed dramatically when it comes to the H M A and concrete costs specifically. And so you can see that in their, uh, cost figures for two thousand nineteen. A lot of the other costs, such as street removal, are, I mean, if you gain a lot of economies of scale, I mean, when you go in and do a large project like we did in seventeen, your subcontractor is gonna give you a good price on stump removal. If you're doing, I think, literally maybe a hundred and twenty trees or stumps at that point in time, now we might be looking at doing ten or twelve, because we're only working on one side of the street, and it's only one block, and so on and so forth. And so mobilization costs, uh, become a lot bigger as due demolition for road bed and everything else. And so, uh, this is a negotiated price based on two thousand seventeen bids. Uh, after a lot of consultation with our engineer, finding out where we should be, we feel pretty good about it, um, given the circumstances noted, passage of time, reduction in scale, and a lot more increase in competition for road construction materials and their application. Uh, but this is probably the end of it. Uh, unless we can negotiate prices early in fall or early winter, and by early winter, I mean December, the council feels our true cost of living increase, so within the realm of one to three, maybe four percent, I think we absolutely should be bidding next year's projects. So, so that we have public confidence in what we're doing.
Right.
Does this make sense?
Yes.
Does, does your, did I answer your question about the specific?
Yes, yes, thank you.
But they do know the difference between their two thousand, the previous price and the, and the proposed two thousand nineteen price, and you can see how it changes, uh, numerically, year over year. And again, the biggest line items, of course, are H M A and concrete.
Mr. Furman?
I do enjoy the idea of, of bidding out moving forward. I have heard some remarks. That we can't maintain the same prices.
Mrs. Hicks?
Is this gonna change our twenty year plan with the village money that we have at all? Because it's more expensive than the bidding, or is this all taken into account when you, can you put our twenty year plan about what's gonna happen then?
Well, price increases always can, they're never good. The twenty year plan, of course, does have escalators in, so the price of a street projected to be done in two thousand thirty-four is higher than we feel we can be bidding today by a reasonable amount. Um, a lot of the reason we felt very confident extending these prices last year, and I'm still confident this year, is that these, this bid came in way under the engineer's estimate. Most bids are coming in above engineer's estimate this year. Our streetscape's an example of that. In previous years, especially coming out of the recession, when public works projects were at a minimum, an engineer might estimate in January that this street's gonna cost a dollar, and the bids were coming in eighty, eighty-five, ninety cents. And it was great, and we experienced that in two thousand seventeen. We're seeing a lot of bids now where they think it'll be a dollar, and the low bids, a dollar three or a dollar four. So, so, and so, I think we're gonna be in a difficult position in the next few years, because the state is seeing a lot more road projects. That's good, but the capacity to perform that road work is not increasing as fast as some of the money is being put into it, and there's not a lot of elasticity in durable goods and labor for things like platform or H M A applications. So we're feeling a pinch, and it's possible that those prices can go up faster than our escalators were estimated. But that's the world we live in. The first couple of years, way below engineer's estimate. This year, we think we're right there. Good competitive price based on what we see happening in the marketplace and a contractor we know the quality of work of. We've learned a lot about our community and what we expect over the last two years. And so there's a big risk. We could, we could have a theoretical negotiated price in November for a ten percent increase and walk away from it, only to bid it out and see that it's fifteen percent higher, and it's somebody we haven't worked with before. And so that's possible, but we can't pick ourselves in the buck. We just have to make a decision based on the evidence and findings we had at that point in time and proceed. Uh, certainly, our engineer will have some recommendations and advice based upon what they see as the marketplace for these goods and services, and our experience with this contractor, uh, but there is, we've gotta maintain public transparency. We can't have folks thinking we just picked our person, and they're gonna do all our projects, no bid until the end of time.
Right.
It's, doesn't instill confidence. And so, uh, there'll be a weighing, a reckoning this fall or winter in terms of how we proceed. But I, I, based on what I'm seeing and how this negotiation went, I think we'll be in bidding territory.
Also, uh, in response to your question about overall plan, because the prices were so low, uh, we did move ahead of schedule with some other things that we've gotten done, uh, moves ahead of when we were planning on them, so they won't be coming up on that schedule that we originally put down.
Yeah, and point of fact, Helmsley Drive is from year six of the five year plan. So it has.
So.
So we're, we're, we're building a head schedule because of the pricing we didn't have.
Good.
That's good. But that could change. Construction's getting expensive. Public can't fight.
Other questions? Or comments? No. Man, quick, would you call the roll?
Farmer?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Pinkston?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
That motion passes. And that concludes our business this evening. We're going to open the meeting again to the public. Any comments from anyone? If there's business tonight or anything coming up? Something you'd like to see on the next council meeting's schedule?
Get Berkeley, get me laid. Uh, I'm always hearing that people don't see the police in town. On a number of occasions recently, I've seen three and four cars at a time in town. I've seen police officers regularly. I just wanted to let you guys know that I do see police officers in town.
So it feels good.
Huh?
Feels good, doesn't it?
Yes.
A lot sooner than what it is, so.
It's all.
Nervous behind me.
I might also mention on that, um, there are at least one or two police, uh, cars that are not marked as police cars, and they're out there watching. Uh, went past one today, my son said, "Did you see that car?" I said, "Why?" He says, "A police officer sitting there with a sweater gun on out the window. It's just a gray car. Looks like he's getting mail out of mailbox." So, even though you may not see them, they're still there.
That's a, a dedicated traffic car that they added on, uh, so that officer can have a marked car, does nothing but just traffic enforcement all day, and, uh, he's doing a great job.
Yeah. On that note, on that note, I feel, I'm feeling a complaint of, uh, black S, um, black H H R in the subdivision that's been going way too fast on Rochester Drive, so we're talking to Chief Bates about this individual.
If, I would suggest that you talk to people there and suggest that something. Try and get a photo of their license plate on your cell phone camera, and over that onto the chief. If I have that person talk to you. Anything else? Nothing from the community or citizens? Nothing from the community or citizens? We usually try not to end before an hour so that the public knows that it's getting its money it worth for paying us.
I do have a question.
Okay.
The first gentleman that spoke at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't write down his name, about the streetlight at Fairchild and Cappy. What would it take to get that functional again? It's already there, it's just the light doesn't work.
With Fairchild Street being rehabilitated this summer, we've ordered additional lighting from consumers. What they've been doing in practice is changing out, it's most likely a high pressure sodium bulb, and replacing with LED. So the light should be new, functional, and clean, and we're looking to add pedestrian lighting, decorative nature that we've seen in other places in Winchester Village, with the intent of adding two lights at each intersection. By that I mean Fairchild Legal, Fairchild, and Cappy. We're limited in what we can do, and the problem doesn't know ownership or boundaries. So there's some school private property, there's some city right-of-way, there's some other areas involved that had lighting issues, or I guess composition issues, dirt road and so on. But we're looking to address those through the State Routs to School partnership we have at the school, which is strong improvement. And so for our part, we're adding lighting this summer. There'll be LED, we look to have two fixtures on each corner. There'll be improving the pedestrian markings. At this point, there's not going to be a new traffic controller for additional stops or signals or anything of that nature. That could happen, but then the Safe Routs to School program should be starting very soon, where we try to get folks like Gary Borg involved, along with educators and other members of the public, professional engineers, to look at other ways to create a general, not only culture of safety and driver and pedestrian awareness, but addressing specific issues. Because some of these I haven't heard, like the lighting on school property by the PACs. That's the first I've heard, I hadn't noticed. But those are the types of things the Safe Routs can address and fund the cities and municipalities, if we can't, if you have enough ability to go on to those properties and effect change.
But the light that's already there, that's just burnout, so that's going to be totally replaced, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And that will be happening in the summer, so that light will be burnt out until summer?
We report burnouts constantly, and it's a system that's tracked with consumers, and sometimes we're better replacing them, and sometimes they're not. This is reminiscent of the time we had a layout, I think, at Fairchild and Miller, and then their student was hit, and it took, we were the council heads, we've been begging for additional lighting here for four years or something, and they didn't do anything until a student was struck.
Wow.
And so, and it was documented way before I even came here, and so I think this is another instance where we have a sheet, police officers will note during night shift which lights are out, or intermittent, sometimes they flash, they do weird things. So they'll report non-functional or partially functional lights. We enter them into the Consumers Energy online database for a work order repair, and sometimes we have to do that two or three times to get a replacement. So I believe that one's in the system, it's been reported, and they replaced it yesterday.
But there's something that we can do, we just are at the mercy of consumers on when they decide to replace it.
Yeah, they are a public utility, and that is, it is their job to do that. So we do report, we do try to track, follow, to make sure there's change. It wouldn't surprise me if we had better luck getting a replacement before the repair. But as far as we're trying to effect change, yes, we do report when they're out, and we are looking to increase the lighting there in terms of its quality and quantity. We think the LED is a much safer light, shows a lot more of the colors, and a pretty good pattern, photometric layout, if you will, and then trying to add one on the east side as well as the southwest corners.
We do in the office always encourage when people call to call, that we will report it, we ask them if they can to call too. It may help, we, you know, we all know, but we try, to try to get people to, we're reluctant to call consumers because they have to stay online. We do it through online, you may be able to do it online too.
Yeah. The other area that we do have responsibility, we do encourage folks to help us out with is tree obstruction of the lights. Sometimes folks will, oh, it's so much brighter now that they put the new LED in, it's like, well, that was just part of the street project, and a big tree came down actually, and was blocking a lot of light. And so that is an area where we do go in and perform maintenance to make sure that the output of the light is what it should be. And so that's an area where a caller would be more directed to the city instead of Consumers Energy if there's a tree, when blocking a light someplace. I know that has to be the case for Fairchild and Cappy. I shouldn't say that. Confident that's not the case at that ever so. But we'll take another look. Can I hear you? Somebody over there say something?
As I mentioned at our last meeting, adults and children all have to realize that it's never a good idea to argue right away with a car, you could only use. Traffic is coming, don't go out in the road in front of it.
Coming up through the ranks, you know, always look both ways, and then again, safety.
Seem to be said for the drivers and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a shared, a shared thing, and we have, we've got all this new technology now. It's all havoc, people say.
All right, it's going to be, thanks to the council members to make their remarks. So, sorry, you're in. Mr. Ruth?
I don't really think I have any, like, business to remark on, but I'm happy to be joining City Council, so thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the streetscape construction after hometown days this year, really, and on the other various construction projects.
Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, Sharpshires will be awesome, and everybody in this room is amazing for being here. We all want to see this community get better, and it's exciting to hear that the Boy Scouts are meeting in the park. It's exciting to hear that the Boy Scouts are still, wasn't that when I was a kid? It was a great time, and that's what sparked my interest in city involvement. Went to my first city council meeting through Coast Scouts. And on that note, they are looking for, the Boy Scouts organization is looking for local adults for some limited help, limited, small-time help. If you'd be interested in that, feel free to reach out to me and get in connection with the right people. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on my turn here in a second. What you said, a couple of years ago, I had problems with my computer and getting it to work properly, and didn't know what to do, get to work properly, and we had several young Boy Scouts here, and I believe one of us was about nine years old, he fixed it in thirty seconds after we were standing there. They wanted a bunch of money with their IT guy. Appreciate that too.
That's cute.
Mr. Hicks?
I sent a email to Adam about Fairchild looking like somebody had wrecked it or whatever because they're going down there doing the gas, and when I walked past it today, it looks like they've got wood up, so they're going to make the curb areas that they had just slot the stuff in evidently going to make them look better, so that was, that was good. I was a little confused when she said, when he said that his daughter, it was like really dark coming in from the back of the high school, and I was trying to figure out, it must be right there at the back entrance to the back parking lot, and I do know that the back parking lot with the pack, it used to have lights all the way through it that were like shine-down lights, and when they redid it, they put these high up ones, and they tend to like go their way up in the air now, so that might be why, and a couple times when I've gone out the back, it is really dark at the back entrance there.
You speak to the PAC entrance of Miller?
Right.
Okay.
No, no, not of Miller, of, of Cappy.
Cappy.
Yeah, it's dark through there, and so it might need some sort of lighting through there.
On a school property, or?
Yes, yes. I don't know how else you would, you'd be able to put it unless you put it across the street. It would have to be between the school and the city, I think, to figure out exactly where it goes. It's, it is dark back at that section, and it's, and the sidewalk is on the one side, but I can, it's confusing. And, um, oh, if anybody wants to donate, rocking for Rosco, I have a pledge form here for the Riddens Club. They do this every year at the hometown days, and if you can't pledge, then stop by and see us, we rock and don't behave ourselves. We're welcome. It's right by the, it's where the car show is going to be. Adam, do you know if they're going to have the car show in the same spot, or is it in a different spot this year?
I don't know what they're proposing, they haven't turned in their application for the festival.
Well, they have started construction by hometown days?
I don't think so.
Okay. I guess that's the real question. All right, that's all.
All right, Mr. Gilbert? Yes, I'd like to welcome the newest member of the city council. Well, I guess, I guess that's it for now. Dr. Pinkston?
Heard today that the state transferred the money that was left in the thoroughbred pool over to the harness racing. That's not a good sign for thoroughbred racing in Michigan. And this group, I don't think, have shown an interest so far in harness racing, so if the state doesn't start cooperating, horse racing is going to be dead in the state. They're just, it, it, it seems like they're intent on eliminating all horse racing, and just any gambling be done at the casinos where they've got control over it. They got control over it anyway. The Gaming Commission controls what goes on at the casinos too, and the horse racing, so I don't know. Are you in contact anymore, Danny, with, with?
Senator Horton?
Yeah.
Doc Kennedy?
I don't know what's going on. I wish somebody could come and talk to us and just bring us up to date, because it's very discouraging to find out that every time you turn around, it's bad news.
What did you talk to him last?
Oh, see what's going on at the state level. They turned, they had that, that transfer of money that they were going to get a percentage of every money bet going back into the, into the cities, and then Snyder turned it down, and I thought with the new governor, they were going to, I heard they were going to bring it right back up again after the first year, it was April, and they still haven't brought it back up, so.
I'll get back with you. I'll get back with you. I know what's happening, either in or out committee, or what's going on. That's it.
That's it. All right. The city, in addition to that water line, we do have a water tower that we're thinking about getting rid of. It could be Schwartz Creek has the world's largest coffee pot.
I like that idea.
So we have to figure out what to do with that. Be good advertising for your business. And glad to see that spring is coming, and everything is getting going with our construction season lining up. Again, I'm very happy to see the progress that's being made in the Sharp funeral home. They are hoping to be able to open in seven weeks, so the time is getting short, and let's see how fast they can get the inside done as well as the outside. We will see. Time will tell if that's going to be on schedule or not. Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Oh, yeah, I'm not.
Well.
Make a motion either.
Last item on my comments is that I am going to be having surgery on my left eye tomorrow for removal of cataract, so I appreciate your prayers for that, feel well, and hopefully we'll see all of you clearly next time we're here. Now, motion adjourned. The others, yes?
Yes.
Yes.